Okay, hi. So this is a review video for your biotech test, which reminder is just a mini test. So it actually only has 15 multiple choice questions and two FRQs. And even the FRQs are only worth like two or four points. So a lot shorter than your normal test because in the AP course, this is actually just part of your gene expression unit. So it would just be an extra few questions on that. We just divided it up just so we could have three kind of major grades and so that we didn't have a gene expression test that was so cumulative. So it is going to be a shorter test. And in some ways, you probably don't even necessarily need a long review video because you could just go back and watch the kind of the two lessons. But just so you have A, an opportunity for some bonus points, and B, just kind of one place that can pull it together. I am going to do kind of a short review on what content you need to know. Honestly, the questions are really more application. So they're really more like, can you look at experimental results based on the techniques we've talked about and then make sense of it? But you do need a little bit of info to go into that. So we will talk about kind of two things. So I want to talk a little about electrophoresis. And then I want to talk about transformation or gene cloning. So making sure you're kind of good on those two techniques. So when we say biotechnology, it's a fairly broad category. So there's a lot more things you can do with biotechnology. But again, because this belongs to kind of an extension of the gene expression unit, this stuff that we're doing for biotechnology tends to relate to kind of more that gene aspect and so that how to get new genes expressed and so forth. So that gene cloning is kind of a key. So I do want to review electrophoresis first. There are a few questions on the test that are making sure you A, understand how electrophoresis works, and B, that you can make sense of data from it. So let's kind of start with electrophoresis for a few minutes and then we'll move from that into the actual gene cloning and transformation. So I guess with electrophoresis, it's a how, and then it's also a how do you interpret it? So I want to go through the key things that you need to know about in terms of the how and make sure that we're good on that. And then we'll go into kind of what are the different styles of interpretation that you could have to actually talk about. So most of you are pretty familiar with the actual technique of making a gel and so forth because a lot of you have been involved in biotech, and we did that in class. One I want to go through is a little bit of the kind of behind the scenes as well. So before you can actually start putting your DNA into a gel, there's a couple of important things that have to happen. So once you've obtained DNA, you're going to have to actually amplify and then cut the DNA. So remember, the goal of electrophoresis is to get DNA to separate into bands. And so if you don't cut DNA, it's not going to separate into bands. So in electrophoresis lab we did in class, we did the lambda DNA with two different kinds of restriction enzymes. And we also ran an uncut lambda, which just showed up as one line. So if you don't cut DNA, you're not going to see the separation of bands. So that's really important. So the amplifying of DNA is done by the process of polymerase chain reaction. Which I do want to just spend a quick minute looking at kind of the three steps of that and making sure you understand kind of the significance and kind of process of polymerase chain reaction. So the goal of polymerase chain reaction is just to make a lot of copies of DNA. So it's really like an artificial DNA replication. So it's going to use the same kind of basic principles of DNA replication. It's just that it's going to be done in a slightly different way. So if you kind of go back to replication, we have enzymes that separate the strands. Then we put primers in place, and then we have enzymes that copy. So it's actually kind of the same three steps that are involved here. So the first step is called denaturation. Denaturation, that's where we're going to actually split the DNA into two strands. So what was once like this is going to become two separate strands. In reality, when it happens in your body naturally, that's done with helicase. And this case is done with heat. So if you heat DNA, it will cause it to split as well. Obviously, that's not something your body can do because the heat that would be involved in trying to do that would kill your cell. But when we're doing it kind of in an artificial environment, we can use heat and separate out the two strands. Then the next stage that we need is we need to actually attach primers to it. So then we're going to take these two strands, and we're going to attach little starters. So you have to have primers that will actually kind of start the strands just like we have to have when we do replication. And then the third step, this is, I think, also called annealing, just means sticking the primers to it. And then the third step is elongation. And that's where it's going to copy from the primers on both strands. And this is done with an enzyme that you do need to know a little bit about. And this is done with the enzyme TAC polymerase. So is a polymerase just like DNA polymerase 3 that we've talked about playing a role in replication? So it's a polymerase enzyme that does the same thing of copying. So similar concept. It's a polymerase that they found that actually can withstand temperature changes. So each of these kind of happens at different temperatures. So it's like really hot, then it cools down, and then we do it at kind of a medium warm temperature. And so because of the temperature extremes, they needed an enzyme that's not going to denature at those temperatures. So we want to be able to put the enzyme in and let this run through multiple, multiple cycles. And so they do actually have an enzyme that can just kind of go at the really high temperatures, really low, and kind of continue to function. So that's kind of the specialized one. Whereas if we tried to purify a DNA polymerase 3, it would be too temperature sensitive to work with this technique. So again, you don't necessarily, like, have to write about this, but just kind of identify kind of what the purpose of this is. And so it's going to just do this over and over and over and over until you go from one single copy of the DNA to actually having many, many, many copies of it. And you need to have enough copies that you're going to be able to see those visible lines. So a single DNA is not going to create a visible line. So you're going to have to copy multiple times. And that's the job of polymerase chain reaction. Then we're going to cut the DNA, and that's going to be done with restriction enzymes. So restriction enzymes are like the glue that holds this unit together. So they are kind of important both in this and in gene cloning. So what we're doing it in this case is we're cutting each individual's DNA with restriction enzymes that will create different sized bands. So the key here is that if we're doing this for electrophoresis, to identify someone, we're counting on the fact that DNA will cut at different places. So they generally use what are called polymorphisms. So they use enzymes that cut DNA at places that are highly variable between people. So we know that this, like, there's certain genes that tend to have a lot of similarity between all of us. So if we tried to cut in the middle of that gene, we would know that we would get fairly similar. But there are certain ones where there are lots of variable repeats. So how big our DNA is at different places would vary by individual. So what we want to do is we want to make sure that if we're doing this for identification purposes, one person's DNA might look like this, while another person's DNA might look like this. So one's going to cut into four, and one's going to save it as only two. So we want to make sure that it's different. And of course, that just depends on where their restriction sites are. So they're going to cut at different places. The places that it would cut are called our restriction sites. And so everybody has different restriction sites. So in the end, what our result is going to be is we're going to be multiple different fragments of different sizes. And again, different people are going to have different sized fragments because their restriction sites are going to be different. So restriction sites are based on your DNA sequence. And because each person's DNA sequence is different, your restriction sites are going to be different. So that's a lot of the kind of fundamental, what do you have to do before you prep? In terms of then understanding kind of what's happening in the electrophoresis, you don't necessarily need to know like the nitty gritty of how to make a gel. What you really need to understand is why the DNA moves and why that's important. And that's kind of what a lot of our lab questions were based on, was understanding kind of the relationship between the percent of the agar, aggro's, and then how that impacts movement, and then the idea of size and so forth. So that was kind of a key thing that we came up to on that lab. So once you have amplified and cut your DNA, then you're going to load and run the DNA in a gel. So the important thing is that you need to know a couple of things. First of all, you need to understand that the DNA is going to move towards the positive electrode. So DNA itself is negative in charge, and so it's going to move towards the positive. So when we actually load our DNA in, we're going to load it in here by the negative side. And the DNA itself carries a negative charge. So because of its negative charge, once we apply the current, once we actually attach this and turn on our electrophoresis chamber, my DNA is going to migrate towards the positive. And to get there, it has to migrate through the pores. So in my aggro's, the aggro's creates kind of a matrix, if you will, with pores. So it can't just run straight through. The DNA has to kind of work its way in and out of the pores. The bigger the DNA is, the harder that is to do. So smaller fragments can move through the pores more quickly. So smaller fragments move more quickly than the larger fragments. That's kind of the two main things you need to be clear on then. Excuse me. Because you need to be very clear that its movement towards the positive and that the size matters. So smaller moves more quickly. That's kind of your fundamental understanding of why electrophoresis works, is that we created different sized fragments. And then because the fragments move at different speeds, we're in a position where we can separate them in the gel. Then you have to stop the gel before the smallest fragment moves off. So you want to stop the gel when the smallest ones are here. And hopefully, that's still giving a chance for your big ones to move. So one of the things that we looked at kind of in the lab was in some cases, in order to stop the small ones from running off, the big ones don't separate very well. So they haven't made it very far, and they're kind of still stuck to each other. And that's where you get kind of that doublet appearance, where they're right next to each other. And that's just a result of not having kind of enough room to separate the big from the small well because you can't let your small ones run off. So that's just one of the kind of complications that you can see from that. So I want to, now that we've done that, I want to just look a little bit at how you can use the data. And particularly, I want to kind of look a little bit at family and relatedness. So a little bit at some of the different things that you can actually use in a fingerprint for. So we practiced in class doing the plasma mapping ones. That is not, you don't have to do plasma mapping on the test. I decided against putting it on the test because they've taken it off the AP test. So it didn't really seem like a lot of point in holding you accountable for a plasma map when I know you're not going to have to do that in May on the test. So some of the situations where you could have to actually analyze it. So the easiest thing would be if you had to actually just be asked like, who is the criminal? So generally, they're not going to ask you about that on AP test because they're just too easy because you're just looking for an exact match in that case. So most of the time, they're going to be looking at kind of relatedness. Or like parental identities. You can also use electrophoresis just for kind of sequencing or testing if something's there. So you can also use it as kind of a screening. So you can actually run DNA and look and see is someone homozygous or heterozygous. So basically, if their two copies cut the same, they're homozygous. If their copies cut differently, they're heterozygous. And that might tell you if there's a, if someone's a carrier or not. So you can use it for screening and other purposes as well. Those are usually pretty easy as well because your question will usually kind of set up for you what you're looking for in that case. So you're looking for kind of two copies of the same versus kind of two different copies. So those ones are pretty straightforward. So I just want to kind of go back over this. And we talked about this at a ninth grade level. But I want to make sure that we've kind of explicitly stated this, that when you're doing parental testing, a child has bands that either mom or dad also had. So we say each individual is different. But again, it comes from your gene sequence. And every gene you have in your body, you got that sequence from your mom or from your dad. So as you're getting your restriction, as the restriction enzymes are cutting, they're going to cut the same as either your mom because that's who gave you that sequence, or your dad because that's who gave you that sequence. So every band you have should be shared with one of your two parents. So that means to do actually analyze a fingerprint, you have to have both parents. So without that, it becomes kind of meaningless to actually try and make any sense of it. So let's say this is mom, this is child, and this is dad one, and this is dad two. So let's give the child some fragments. And let's say that mom actually shares this fragment, this fragment, and this fragment. So then let's say dad one has quite a lot in common with the child. So yay, dad one has all those fragments in common. Whereas dad two only has three common fragments with the child. So there's dad two. So then when you look at this, it's, one mistake people can make is they can look at it and say, well, dad one has one, two, three, four, five common fragments. Dad two has only three common fragments. It must be dad one. That's actually the incorrect way of interpreting that. So what you have to do is you have to look through and go ahead and eliminate any child shares with mom. So this fragment here, the child could have gotten from the mom. So we've already accounted for that. This fragment here, child shares with mom. This fragment here, child shares with mom. So the only three fragments that I'm looking for are these three here. And then here's my dilemma. Dad one doesn't have that fragment. So even though dad one shares a lot of material, it can't be dad one because he doesn't have that fragment. Whereas if you look at dad two, he does have all the ones that aren't explained by mom. So even though he only has three total, they're the three that we really needed him to have. So as a result, dad two is a better candidate for paternity because of that. So that's just one thing. There's like three or four, maybe, maybe about four of the 15 questions that are electrophoresis based. One of the FRQs kind of comes to it as well. And so there's a couple, there's like a set two or three that are actually related to some sort of kind of family resemblance. The others are kind of more straightforward kind of screening questions that will basically kind of talk you through what you're looking for. So I just wanted to make sure we kind of went back over that and you were clear on kind of how to read fingerprint for a family relatedness. Okay, so that's kind of everything electrophoresis. That's the how, and then that's the what you do with the actual information. The rest of the information that we talked about in this unit all came down to gene cloning. So gene cloning is kind of the big topic. And in fact, with the way they've written the course now by putting this with the gene expression unit, I would say they're probably moving more towards only really asking about gene cloning as kind of an extension of that unit. So let's kind of narrow in of what are we talking about in this case? So gene cloning is basically the process by which we're going to insert a gene into another organism, usually bacteria, for the goal of them to copy either the gene or a protein product from it. So when we say gene cloning, we want to insert a gene of interest into another organism, usually bacteria, so that they either copy the gene or express it for protein. So those are kind of two different goals, but related. So in some cases, what we're actually wanting is we're wanting to just copy that DNA over and over and to get bunches of copies of the gene because we might use that. Most of the time, and again, because of the fact that this is placed within our gene expression unit, most of the time, we're really looking at it with the goal of then having the bacteria express that gene and make that for us. So human insulin's the example where if we can get the gene expressed, then the bacteria can start making human insulin for us that we can then extract and use. So sometimes we're just like, make a bunch of copies of the gene so we can use that gene in gene therapy. A lot of times, we actually want it expressed because that's actually something that's harder for us to do artificially than just copy it. So we have mechanisms in place for gene copying, like we talked about with polymerase chain reaction. So really, most of the time, we want an organism to not just take the gene, but make something that we want from it. So that's kind of what we actually were talking about. So now we need to go into the steps of that. And like I said, most of the questions on the test are probably more application than just direct recall. But there is a little bit of understanding exactly the process as well. So if we kind of look at step one here, is we want to actually insert the gene of interest. So to do that, we're going to generally use a plasma. So plasmids are easier because they can get moved easily into bacteria. Bacteria are more likely to accept a plasma than just a random naked chunk of DNA. So a plasma is a good tool. Remember, bacteria naturally accept plasmids. It's a kind of a way that bacteria have evolved because they don't sexually reproduce. It's a way of sharing some genetic material to increase variation. And a lot of times, helpful genes like antibiotic resistant genes will end up on plasmids, and that way the bacteria can kind of pass on that resistance. So plasmas are naturally occurring thing that bacteria are already kind of primed to be inclined to accept. So our goal is usually to put the gene onto a plasma. So we want to insert the gene into a plasma. And so in order to do that, we need two tools. So we need to actually cut the plasma. And we need to know kind of where we're cutting it because we want to know kind of where it's going to be inserted, especially if we're inserting two different genes. We want to make sure that we are not cutting it like in the middle of a gene that we need for the bacteria to take it and things like that. So we're going to cut the plasma with restriction enzymes. And again, the restriction enzymes are going to cut at known recognition sites. And because of plasma mapping, which again, you're not going to have to know how to do on the test, but you do have the background of, because we've mapped a lot of our plasmids, we know when we use the restriction enzyme, we know where it's going to cut. So it's not a surprise cut. It's, hey, I know there's a place I can cut here, and I know there's also a place I can cut here. So I know I can insert something there and something there. So we're going to use restriction enzymes where we know it. And we're generally are going to create, the restriction enzymes create kind of sticky ends whereby they kind of have a perfect place to then insert. So then we cut the gene with the same restriction enzyme as we cut the plasma, and they're going to kind of fit together like a puzzle. So we're going to cut the plasma with restriction enzymes, and we're going to cut or manufacture our gene to have the same or matching kind of sticky ends. So that they're going to naturally seal in. So we kind of create this little gap in my plasma, and then we want to do the same with our gene. So if we know that this has kind of like a AG overhang, and this has a CT overhang, then I can make sure that my plasma that I want to insert is kind of opposite. So it might have a TC, and this one might have a GA. And so that way, I know that that'll kind of fit there. So I'm going to make sure I have kind of the right base pairing to make it fit. That's not something you really need to worry about. That's just kind of why we did do a little bit of reading about sticky ends and the idea of knowing how the restriction enzymes are going to cut is important because that tells us what we need to put in our gene of interest. We need to make sure that that's lined up. So then that's going to end up where these are compatible. But we still need to actually seal them in to create the backbone bonds. And so we're going to kind of glue or seal it. And we're going to use ligase for that. So ligase is the same enzyme that we use naturally in DNA replication. The ligase is going to come in, and it's just going to seal that together. So it's going to close it up. So now we've put our gene of interest into our actual plasma. The other thing we're usually going to do is we're usually going to also insert an antibiotic resistant gene in order to select for the bacteria that have actually transformed. So most of the time, we're going to also insert antibiotic resistance. And the reason for that is we're going to use that for selection in our transformation lab. So what we want to do is we want to make sure that the only bacteria that can survive do have the plasma. And so if we plate it on antibiotics, and they have the antibiotic resistance only if they've taken in the plasma, we can identify that. That's an important concept. So that's something in our labs, something you're going to be writing about in your lab report. And then kind of the data questions on the test, that is going to be something you have to be very clear on. So the role of antibiotic resistance in this process is key. So then we're going to stick another gene, which again, we needed to know that we had another kind of restriction site there. And that might be our ampicillin resistance. So we have our gene of interest, we have our ampicillin resistance. So a lot of you, when I was reading your kind of free response question on this, you kind of went straight, that was, you were just, that was it. You're like, and then I put the ligase in, and done! Now I have the plasma, hooray! So the next step is really important because all this is done is created a plasma in the lab. I need the plasma to go into the bacteria. So I need to actually get this from the lab into the bacteria itself. And that's the next step, which is transformation. So now, in order to get the plasma into the DNA, so now we need bacteria to accept the plasma to gain the gene. So all we've done so far is put it on the plasma. Now I need my bacteria to get it. And that's what transformation is. So remember, bacteria do transformation naturally, but it's a slower process and less kind of percent likelihood of that it takes it in. If we want to do it in a lab, we use the process called heat shocking. So if we want to do artificial transformation, we can use heat shock and the calcium carbonate to try and make the cells more competent. Which basically means they're more likely to accept it than if they were left on their own. So we can increase kind of our likelihood of that happening. The other thing is that not all of them are going to transform. So again, transformation is not 100%. The idea is some of the bacteria, even with heat shock and all that, some of them will just not accept the plasma at all. So we're going to emphasize that some will accept the plasma, but not all. So then what we want to do is, once we've exposed the bacteria to the plasma, we want to have a way of testing who actually accepted it. So if we want to determine, okay, some of them accepted it and some didn't, how do we know if they accept it or not? That's where the antibiotic resistance comes in. So the next step we're going to do is we're going to select the bacteria that have accepted the plasma. So we want to select for bacteria that did successfully transform. And we do that with antibiotic plates. So essentially, if they accepted the plasma, they should be able to grow because they now have ampicillin resistance. So if they accepted the plasma, they gain ampicillin resistance. And therefore, they should be able to grow even on an antibiotic plate. If they did not accept it, so some of them are not going to have to, they're going to accept it. So if they did not get the plasma, either because they were never exposed to it or because they just didn't, that bacteria didn't, then they're going to be killed by the ampicillin. And we're going to see no growth. So one thing that hopefully, I'm recording this before we've checked our results, hopefully will show up, is because not all of them did, generally, when you do see growth on an antibiotic plate, you're going to see small isolated colonies. Because again, not all of my bacteria did accept it. So when we plate it on there, some of the bacteria is going to die because it didn't accept the plasma. So we're going to put a whole bunch of bacteria on there, and it might be that 50, 70% of the bacteria is killed by the ampicillin. So you're going to have the colonies that accepted it remaining. You're not going to have a whole lawn because not all your bacteria were successful. A lot of the times, you're also, which is what we did in our lab, you also include plates without antibiotics as a control. And those are usually working as a positive control. The idea being that what we're seeing there is we're confirming that if you didn't have antibiotics, they could grow. So we're making sure that there is growth of the bacteria, that we didn't kill the bacteria in the heat shock process. So those are acting as a positive control, and instead of seeing the isolated colonies, generally on these, you're gonna see a lawn, which means lots of growth, because nobody's gonna die by antibiotics in this case. So it doesn't matter whether they had the plasmid or not, everything should be able to grow on normal plates. So we're gonna see lots of growth with or without plasmid. So regardless of whether they ever got exposed to it, regardless of whether they accepted it, everybody should be able to grow on a normal LB plate. So these generally are called LB plates, which just means lurya broth, and a lot of times, the antibiotic plates will be phrased as LB plus AMP or plus penicillin or whatever it is. So just trying to go through a few things that'll help you kind of in navigating results, so that when you look at information, you can kind of see what it's getting at. So make sure you kind of understand the difference, that if there's no antibiotics, you should see lots of growth. If there's antibiotics and they had the plasmid, then the ones that accepted it only will grow, and because that's not everybody, you're gonna see isolated, small colonies, and the ones that either didn't, if you had, one that had no plasmid at all, is not gonna grow. This, in this case, would actually be what we would call a negative control, because this is there to show what if you don't get the plasmid. So if you don't get something, what's the outcome gonna be? So we have a positive control, which is basically like ensuring that there is growth without kind of introducing the ampicillin, and our negative control, which is saying, if there's no growth, what are we expecting? I mean, if there's no plasmid, what do we expect? The last piece of it is that we need to make sure the conditions are right for expression. So we need to ensure the conditions favor gene expression. This isn't something we specifically looked at in our lab, which I kind of wish it had, ours was just a little bit more simple than didn't actually have this aspect into it, but there's a couple things to kind of make sure that's the case. So the first of all is that when you actually insert it, you have to make sure you insert a promoter as well. So we're starting it into a bacteria, so most of the time, we don't need a transcription factor, we just need to make sure it has a promoter sequence that RNA polymerase combined to. So you have to have that promoter, and then in some cases, it may have kind of its own operon attached to it. So in some cases, for instance, if we try and insert a gene that's gonna create lactase, it may only do that in the presence of lactose. So it may not express it all the time, so we may need to make sure, are there certain things that are required for gene expression to actually occur? So whether or not, you know, we need something. So I'm just gonna write think operons. I do, we need lactose for expression. So in order to express something, we need to check that. So even like human insulin, human insulin is only expressed in the presence of glucose. So if glucose is present, then our bodies use that as an indicator that we need to express insulin. So it may be that if you put in a bacteria, if the bacteria doesn't have glucose there, it's not gonna be expressed, because that gene is, its expression is linked to certain environmental conditions. Not something hugely important, but just something to be aware of. Sometimes if it's referring to an experiment, it would have to tell you that, like, it's not something you would be expected to know, but sometimes, just because the gene is there, doesn't necessarily mean that it's gonna be expressed. So we need to ensure that whatever kind of is regulating its expression is there in place as well. So we want to, if there's anything that's necessary for expression of that gene, that would have to be present in the plate as well. So that's kind of the last piece, is just to make sure that you have the promoter there, and that you have the right conditions, anything that is needed for expression present as well, and then you should be able to get it to express the actual protein product. Okay, so that was a pretty short one, that's only about 35 minutes, so I just wanted to kind of make sure that you were clear on some of these terms and their role, and that you understand kind of the content behind it, and then your goal on the test is gonna be to be able to apply all of that to an actual kind of results and make sense of that. Thanks.